And we'll call the meeting to order with Budget Regents.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have not heard from our clerk, but I'm assuming she will be here. And in her absence, is anybody willing to serve?
I'll do it. I seem to be the de facto choice.
You're very good at it.
Can we make that a motion then?
I will make that. Can I nominate myself? Is that legal?
You can.
I'll support, I'll support that.
Okay, I make a motion to nominate myself as temporary clerk.
All right. Motion by Lay, support by Brown. Any other discussion? Thank you for being willing to serve. All in favor of the motion to appoint Trustee Lay as our temporary clerk until clerk arrives? Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. And with that, temporary clerk Lay, would you be willing to do a roll call of the board, please?
Yes. All right. Supervisor Milkie?
Here.
Treasurer Rogers?
Here.
Trustee Brown?
Here.
Trustee Lannan?
Here.
Trustee/ Clerk Lay, here. Trustee Thering?
Here.
Everyone's here. And Cody's excused for now.
Thank you. We have an agenda in front of us. If I would make a suggestion, can we add like a three or four minute item at the end of 11C that, just to discuss and prepare for the joint meeting next week? I'd like to hear input from all of you.
Sure.
Yeah, absolutely.
Sounds like a good idea.
With that, I'm happy to entertain any motions.
Oh, is that a motion?
It was not a motion, it was a suggestion.
I move that we add the little time at the end, make 11C to discuss next week's meeting.
Support.
So that's a motion to approve the agenda with the addition, correct?
Yes.
Any discussion? See none, all in favor of approving the agenda with the one addition? Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Agenda passes unanimously with the addition. We do have a presentation listed today, Maslow's Village, who's been here before, but it's been a while. Mr. Stuldry, do you have anything that you need to add?
I do not, thank you.
And with that, Amanda Banks, is that right? Break, break, my apology. I don't have my glasses on, I misread.
That's all right.
You have the floor.
Thank you so much for having me. It is nice to see new faces and old faces, and I certainly appreciate the honor and opportunity to come and present what we've been doing and what we've got going so far. A little bit about me, I am the Section 8 Coordinator. I wear a few hats, so bear with me. Section 8 Coordinator for Mount Pleasant Housing Commission, property manager for our family housing at the Housing Commission. I am the Chair of the Education and Communications Division of the Mishta Region G. I am on the Board of the Summit Clubhouse. I am the Board President and Acting Director of Maslow's Tiny Home Village, and most importantly, I am a CMU alumni. So thank you, thank you for having me.
Fire up chips.
Wonderful.
All right. So up on that board, you're going to see a few of our friends that we have been working in cooperation with. Their input is invaluable. We have about thirty-four total nonprofit agencies right now that are in collaboration. These are the ones that have signed up to be official partners, so we just wanted to make sure to make note of them and how awesome they've been during this process. So, let's see, it did so good. There we go. Based on HUD standards, family housing should cost no more than thirty percent of a family's income. In Isabella County, fifty-one percent of our runners are paying significantly more than that. Forty percent of the citizens in the United States actually qualify for some type of housing assistance. Of that forty percent, only sixteen percent of our population actually receives the assistance that they need. I'm not quite that technical, so I'm not sure what that is.
Some technical difficulties.
Okay, technical difficulties are something I'm very familiar with. I usually start my speeches with, so I'm a mother of three girls. I am not used to completing sentences, so if at any point in time during this presentation you want to interrupt me and ask me something, please feel free to do so. Isabella County, like I said, forty percent of our households are currently spending more than the thirty percent of their income on rent. This is just of the United States, and you can see there's a lot of red areas, because that's a lot of folks in this country that need some help. Based on the most recent ACAT study of our community, there's a lot of statistics and a lot of facts, but this is one of the ones that I find the most important. Generally, people think that if they need housing assistance, it's because they're not working. The truth of the matter is, in Isabella County, we only have a four-point-two percent unemployment rate, and still a twenty-three-point-seven-eight percent poverty rate. Isabella County, according to Michigan's Poverty Task Force 2023 report, states that Isabella County is actually the highest in our poverty per capita. And if you haven't noticed, I do love my numbers, so I apologize if you find them boring. ICRH is our only homeless shelter in Isabella County. Their maximum capacity is twenty-nine individuals. As of the last pick count, so point in time, there were five-hundred-and-sixty individuals that are homeless in this county. We have over two-hundred-and-thirty-seven families that qualify for assistance that are on the waitlist for the voucher at the Housing Commission. That wait takes approximately five years or more. We take in about twenty applications per week, so you can imagine we're a little busy down there. The Mount Pleasant Housing Commission is the only housing commission for Isabella County. Just as a definition, because I think that sometimes folks aren't quite certain, what is HUD's definition of homeless? Homelessness is individuals who lack a fixed, regular, adequate nighttime residence, which includes one of the following. A place not meant for human habitation, which means there are no reliable utilities. If they are living in a shelter, a hotel, a motel, paid for and assisted by an organization. The definition of nearly homeless is someone who is underhoused, so there are way too many people living in the household. Someone who's couch surfing, or someone who is illegally in tenancy at a unit. A little bit of our history is that on December 6th of 2021, through the inspiration of the community church's desire to end homelessness, several of us got together and had a conversation titled Conversations on Homelessness. There were fourteen health agencies that were represented at this meeting, and as a result, the Mount Pleasant Transitions Committee was created. Our very first meeting is the Tiny Homes Committee was created, happened actually on May 3rd of 2022. Of course, on that day, I declared that we would be up and running by April of '23. To my surprise, it takes a lot of work to build a village. Here is a list of some of the folks that were involved. The Transitions Committee was led by Annie Sanders, the President and CEO of the Isabella and Gresham County United Way, Dee Orbiertek, who is the Executive Director of ICRH, our homeless shelter here in Isabella, and me. Our current Tiny Homes Committee, or rather Board members, consists of folks that work for the community mental health, Summit Clubhouse, the Community Church, Habitat for Humanity, Isabella Citizens for Health, GI Tech, who is working hand-in-hand right now with CMU Interior Design Students, and we've got representatives from the Shelter House in Listening Ear. Transitions Committee created three additional groups, one focusing on landlord relations, another on mentors for continued success for those coming out of homelessness, and another group focusing on the increase of affordable housing stock in our community. Our mission is to fulfill the most basic need of shelter with affordable tiny living while providing the tools and support for members to excel. We do have preferences for the village. Those preferences are as follows: veterans, youth that have aged out of the foster system, elderly and disabled folks, and in Phase Two will be servicing single parents. Some of the statistics on those groups are that we have four-hundred-and-fifty-six veterans in Michigan that are homeless, which is about twelve-point-nine percent of the national population of homelessness. McKinney-Vento youth, so those are youth after they age out of the foster system, who are forty percent likely in their lifetime, I'm sorry, before the age of twenty-one to become homeless. Twenty percent of them are homeless immediately at the age of eighteen. They make up approximately fifty percent of the entirety of the homeless population. Elderly and disabled, please forgive me for the error in my notation there, it's actually fifty percent elderly, disabled, and forty-two percent of the homeless population fit into one of those two categories. And single parents have an eighty-five percent more likelihood of being homeless at some point during the raising of their children. We did name it Maslow's Village because we wanted very much to focus on the hierarchy of needs. What are the things that we can fulfill for the members in our community? When you look at the hierarchy of needs, the bottom two main emphasis are on physiological, and the second being on safety. We, in the creation of this village, will actually be able to satisfy those main core foundational issues that come with folks that are homeless, or that have perpetually been homeless, or are at risk of homeless. And we want to focus on those needs, create the ability to fulfill and to advance them in their personal success. Without housing or without an address, folks are unable to gain employment, education, healthcare, social security, or disability payments, and even be put on the waitlist for a house. So what are we doing? We're doing Phase One, which is forty micro houses. They are very, very small. Current drawings are approximately a hundred-and-twenty square feet. They can house up to one to two dwellers. The average cost for the shell is estimated at twenty-five-hundred dollars. An estimated cost after heat is added, AC is added, sink, multi-function toilet, and insulation and electric would be somewhere around a five-thousand-dollar ballpark. This is the design concept that we have from our GI Tech students. Just a little side note there, we've been working with some fantastic people. Erin Catmuller actually began the drawing concept. He's worked on several different boards of zoning and tiny homes and national organizations that are working on creating a universal acceptance of tiny homes as a use for both long-term housing and temporary housing. The tiny home, which is going to be Phase Two of our building, is for families. This is going to be a three-to-four dweller unit. It's approximately six by twelve, very much like, the design-wise would be like what you're seeing on HGTV, where, you know, they call it a shed style. It's a two-story, dividing the top floor into bedrooms. It will, of course, have a very small kitchen, a shower area. They will have electric and heat, air conditioning, toilet and a sink. Average cost for the shell, well, depending on inflation, currently is estimated between nine thousand and sixteen thousand dollars. After additions, we're hoping to be close to the twenty-five thousand dollar range. Twenty was a few months ago, so please accept that edit. We are working on something that is going to have less of carbon footprint, is going to be more affordable when it comes to construction, and is decreasing the transmission of pests and diseases. A lot of conversation that I've had begins with, why don't we just create or expand the current shelter? communal shelters don't necessarily work for all individuals. There are a lot of folks that are homeless and have experienced extreme trauma. And so we find that individual housing tends to create that sense of security and home, and allows them to heal and advance. So what's going to be included in this village? A communal-style bathhouse with exterior opening doors, so they go in from the outside of the shower, they lock the door, and that way there's no interfacing in the middle, so to speak. If you've ever been to a campground, and they've got everybody kind of in there and taking a shower, and it's all open, we want to, again, avoid those traumas. So this is based on the advice that we've gotten from the domestic violence shelter workers that we work with, the most safe way to make sure that people feel comfortable taking a shower. We also are talking about affordable rents. So HUD has a premise that folks should pay forty percent on rent plus some tolls. So as folks are gaining income, they're going to be contributing to the village. A minimum rent would be fifty dollars, very similar to what HUD's programming is. I oftentimes tell my clients, if you can't get enough cans and you can't donate enough plasma, we need to have a different conversation. So that's what we're looking at as far as their contribution. Mailing address, again, as the reasons that I listed before, we're talking about health and safety for our participants. And you have someone ask, is this going to be a gated community? There will be gating around the community, and that is to make sure that our participants are protected in the evening. So we find that a pretty important point to make. The goal is to run on full seller, which is something that the tiny homes in the Detroit area have actually done and been incredibly successful with. It definitely decreases the amount of utility that you're using in the area and the bills that folks would have to pay. So recipients will be referred by partnering agencies only. We will not be taking applications. When they come in, they need to have an action plan built for them by a professional. So there are professionals in domestic violence. There are folks that are professionals in current homeless, for example, ICRH. What are all the proofs that people need is that you have your social security card, your photo ID, in order to get a job, in order to sign up for benefits, in order to get on waitlists. So we want to make sure that the professionals that are doing an awesome job at what they're doing are able to come in and do those jobs. Wraparound services will include things such as financial literacy, healthcare, connections with the local employment, and training. We will have an MOU, so Memorandum of Understanding with our partners, to make sure that all of these steps are being taken through a thorough case management service, very similar to the Salvation Army's Current Pathways of Hope. This creates an ability to have measurable success rates and outcomes. A standard tiny home is approximately five-hundred-and-fifty square feet. Standard tiny homes take approximately seventeen percent of a single-family home's utilities. So if we're talking about a hundred-and-twenty square feet, you can imagine how much we're saving on our costs for the environment. Fifty apartments, if we were to do the build just for the building materials themselves, not talking about purchasing a property, on a very conservative estimate, we're talking approximately four-point-three million dollars. With our property plus the building of these micro homes, we're looking at less than two million dollars. So it's a pretty good rate to save so many folks. Our goal is independent housing and long-term self-sufficiency. The majority of the Housing First studies have found that transitional housing, which is what we will be, housing that is more stable than a congregate shelter yet not adequate for long-term residency, is the key to unlocking the door to long-term self-sufficiency. As homelessness is currently on the rise, we at the tiny homes are prepared to lessen the impact on our community. It is estimated by the National Alliance for Homeless Intervention that a community saves approximately four thousand dollars between incarceration costs and medical costs when they have a tiny home group that is able to offer this transitional housing, and they have an eighty-six percent success rate in ending homelessness, according to HUD studies. We are not just creating a brand-new model. There are plenty of other tiny home groups that are doing this, both with transitional and long-term housing, and I'd like to show you a few, my friend. So we've got Nicholsville Union. They are in Seattle. They have four known villages, over seven hundred homes. They're partnered with local government. Their community is ruled by democratic rules, so the tenants volunteer for the cleaning, they do the security, and they work together to create that community. On the right, you see Cottages at Hickory Crossing. This is in Dallas, Texas. They have a beautiful design. They're focused on veterans. They're a very tight-knit community. They offer medical treatment and reintegration. Right on the bottom of that, you see Square One Villages in Eugene, Oregon. They have six villages, and high school students from their tech department actually build and design each of their tiny houses. Then in the bottom-left corner, you can see Community First, which is in East Austin, Texas. I had the privilege to go and visit them in April of '23. They're awesome. They are constantly expanding. They have fifty-one acres. They have five hundred tiny homes. They have natural gardens that are open to the community. They have a store that their villagers actually create different items, art or handyman experience, things like that, and they sell them in the store, which then is an income for the residents. And they also have a business plan for an Airbnb. So if you can go visit them, I highly suggest it. It was a wonderful experience. The Low Housing Income Housing Institute, they are absolutely phenomenal. They have a little bit of everything. They have large apartments. They have small apartments. They have single-family homes. They help with the Section 8 coordination in the area, and they also have multiple tiny home villages. An article was done by a college student in '24, kind of studying, what does it look like in the Midwest as far as tiny homes are concerned? Some of the important facts that they listed during that is that there are thirty-seven tiny home villages in this Midwest area. You can see which states they belong to. The growth of tiny homes tends to be a trend. They have continuously added more and more communities throughout the years. Organizations are generally a hundred percent nonprofit, sixty percent faith-based, thirty percent specifically for veterans, and forty percent specifically for those who are chronically homeless. Housing usually is thirty percent for permanent supportive housing, and then there's a pretty good chunk of sixty percent that are just for transitional housing. And we've got listed the average length of stay, as well as the percentage for those folks. So this is the property that we are currently focusing our efforts on. There are two predeveloped lots located close to employment, grocery stores, business routes. The environmental survey Phase One has been completed. The topographical has also been completed and is under contract with OHM. Thirteen total acres, fifty planned tiny and micro houses. And this is our vision for the village. So these were both conceptually drawn by the students at GI Tech. The one on the right, I think, is just a little bit more fun, so I thought I would incorporate that. Additionally, Stage Three would be to purchase the large doctor, or medical building that is over there with the fourteen separate offices. It's ADA compliant, has a centrally-located kitchen, multiple stall bathrooms. Our goal for this community center would be an Isabella County Community Center. So this is not just to serve folks that are in the tiny home village, but Isabella in general. When you've got thirty-two nonprofit agencies that are partners with this, we want to make sure that other folks in our community have the ability to access those resources as well. These are some of the contributors, which I had printed these out and then realized we forgot a few of our friends. So there's a few more people that are out there on the contributors list. We have twenty-eight tiny home piggy banks that are out and about in the community. Listed first are Huggy Bears and Pickers3Sicko, because they have been phenomenal at their donations and are always top. Here's a little bit of the news coverage that we've had. I like to brag a little bit about that, because it's fun to have that conversation. And we like to let everyone know, we are in fiscal sponsorship agreement with United Way. So all funding goes directly to United Way and through United Way, and is accounted for by United Way. We do have our official giving link. We have a text to give, and then we have our email address listed on there as well, and our Facebook. And that concludes my presentation. My favorite part is conversation, so please. My favorite part is conversation, so please feel free to ask any questions.
Thank you.
I've seen the one in Austin and the one in Dallas, and they've got an amazing setup. It's really fantastic.
So where are you at, in the process of moving forward?
So we are currently working on our zoning negotiation, and those will, our beginning conversation to the planning board is next week. And bringing OHM.
That answered one of my questions. I was going to ask about the zoning aspect, because I know, at least in the past, we didn't really address this type of structure or zoning, so.
This, in order for this to be considered, it has to be done as a planned unit development. So despite nothing's been applied forward, but they are in the agenda for presentation.
Good. Glad you're taking those steps. Average length of stay, do you expect that to kind of mirror what's in your document here?
Generally, the average length of stay, yes, the percentages are pretty close to what we're expecting. I do think that I bring in a different caveat to this tiny homes village in that I work with our local landlords every single day. I also work with all of the surrounding, actually, the whole state of Michigan has several different housing commissions that have little or no wage. So if the end game is to make sure that they have stable housing, I can definitely get them on shorter lists than our five-year wait that we have here in Mount Pleasant.
Yeah, we have a good community with some additional housing currently.
Yes.
Yes. So you mentioned gating, and I didn't remember that from last, I think it was last year where you were here, maybe it was longer even.
We've done a lot of work since I saw you last.
So with the gating, you mentioned gating for security for the residents.
Yes.
Is the intent then that there's really one in and out, which would be, I'm just assuming, to the east on Jeffrey Lane? Is that?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
And that gate will be manned by volunteers that live in the village.
In the village?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that was new then. So I didn't forget it then. Is that correct?
I don't think so, yeah.
Any other questions?
When you say man, is it a security gate? Like they'll have a car or something like that? Or actually, you'll be out there twenty-four-seven manning this gate?
There'll be after-hours, absolutely, someone twenty-four, or manning in the evening. So lights out, someone's at the gate.
Twenty-four-seven, all right, all right.
I'd just like to mention that your vision is amazing, in my view. You know, it's a community helping people in the community. And what you lay out here aligns well with goals or what we call ends here at the township, which, community, community good and community well-being. You know, this is, no community wants people on the street, and you need to invest to help the people.
Absolutely.
So they don't have to be on the street and can make their life better and more prosperous and be good for the community ultimately, so.
I agree. There are so many economic advantages to stable housing. And so we find in study after study, the longevity of folks that are able to find affordable and stable housing contribute massively to the taxes, to the overall well-being of the community. You have longevity in the schools, you know, at their employment site, and it's, working at the housing commission every single day, my job is to tell people, I don't have anything for you right now. And I need to be able to give something, you know? And so that's kind of where this all began. And then it was like, there was so much excitement from the community members and these other organizations, because they've got a lot of folks that are coming to their organizations and saying, we need all this help. Long-term healing requires stable housing. And so if folks don't have somewhere to stay while they're going through their counseling or they're going through their medical procedures, you know, they often kind of drop off and then we'll see them, you know, at some point later. And we could have been helping this entire time and gotten to a point where they have their own independence and health and well-being. So really appreciate you seeing that. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll second that. I think this is a great project. You know, I'm a big supporter of the shelter that we have, the new shelter now, or relatively new. But that's much more temporary. This actually gives people a home, which really helps lift them up out of the cycle of homelessness.
I think the communal, like the gardens and the kitchen and things like that give them a level of dignity that living in a communal setting doesn't necessarily provide.
We're hoping that that front area, that's more, so where the homes will be, that will be our gated community. But we want to live and breathe in our external community as well. So having our communal garden and our orchard in that area where people are allowed to come and visit, maybe purchase some fruits and vegetables and interact with the folks that are living in the village, I just, decency and respect, that's all we say all day, you know? Thank you for seeing that.
Yeah. You've already, excuse me, you've already purchased the land?
No. We are not able to purchase the land as far as fundraising or as far as grant funding at this point in time until we have a purchase by date, and that is going to be very dependent on the zoning process. So once that's completed, then United Way assures me that there is not going to be difficulty in raising that funding. And I do, oh, I forgot to tell you, I do need to say a big, huge thank you to Dr. Zubar and the colleagues at Prism Real Estate, the owners of the property. Once the purchase is complete, they're donating ten percent of the purchase price back into the tiny home village so that we can use that to build our homes.
Nice.
Well, best of luck to you, Amanda.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. And thank you again for having me. If you have any other questions or you think of something later, I've put my card on there. There's also the Tiny Homes brochure and our, obviously, our fabulous new presentations. So I am happy to field anything, or you can send anything my way, and I thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. That completes item five on our agenda. We have no public hearings. That brings us to item seven, public comment. Public comment is restricted to three minutes regarding items on this agenda. Please note, if you choose to address the public, that you state your name and address for the record. And with that, we'll open up public comment at seven thirty-two PM.
There's nobody online.
Let the record show, nobody's connected online. Seeing nobody jumping up, last call. Let the record show, nobody came forward, last call, second last call. We'll close public comment at seven thirty-two PM. That brings us to item nine on the agenda, report boards and comments. Just a note on the, on the board's EDA, I think, we have, Jeff Sweet's had to retire, and we have that open spot. Just a reminder, EDA has special requirements. Ideally, you either own a business or reside in one of the DDAs. And with that, we'll go to board member reports. Trustee Brown?
My, the Mount Pleasant City Commission meets this coming Monday, so I'll have to be next meeting.
Trustee Lannan?
Yes, I attended a meeting yesterday morning. It was the Isabella County Board of Commissioners Finance and Committee, the whole meeting. A few of the things that they went through that I'll highlight were, and this is their work session, so this is work they do to move forward next Tuesday night at their evening board meeting. So they're looking to move forward ratifying and placing on file the March twenty-eighth and the April fourth invoice list. The value, the total invoice was in the neighborhood of two million, two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. The bulk of that was a hundred and, or one point five million, I want to say, for contracts work on the jail. So that was exceedingly large. Annually, they put together a grant plan and application for the Michigan Indigent Defense Fund, and so that is standard business that goes forth, and they are in good position to place that application. One note that was stated at that point, a local attorney, Bill Shirely, has worked very closely with the Indigent Fund folks for a long time, and it appears he will probably be retiring midsummer. Also of interest was an expenditure they hope to approve in just north of three hundred thousand dollars for a radio tower project, which has been in progress and is in operation now, and it's utilized through emergency management services to communicate with the emergency responders here in the county. And it's been really beneficial in the sense that it has created good coverage throughout the county in areas where coverage was very spotty at best, and that typically is in heavy metal buildings, buildings on campus and throughout the community. So they feel that it's already showing it's working well, and so that bill will be coming up. Also, they got their 2025 equalization report given by Mr. Preston, and indications are, due to really sales on capping taxes and monies from solar farms that are considered about fifty percent complete, there's been an increase in assessed value and taxable value in the county. And last but not least, they're going to be looking at their administrator-controllers contract that was put in place recently when they hired a new controller at the beginning of the year. And they're looking to put in a three-year contract in an effort, you know, to create stability and help with long-term planning. And so that was the gist of the work session.
Awesome, thank you. So the radio tower, I believe, was, you said three hundred thousand dollars. I think that was all grant, though, right? State grants?
I don't know, I don't know the details on the financing.
I'm pretty sure I'm correct on that.
I wouldn't be a bit surprised. It goes into the state funding, getting them onto the eight hundred megahertz radio system that the state utilizes and gets folks all integrated and networked to communicate well.
Sheriff Maine was here in the fall talking about it, and I believe that's what he had indicated, so.
Yeah, yeah. I don't know how the monies were appropriated. They just have to pay the bill.
I figure, I figured the public might want to know with all that's transpired, that this was not out of general fund revenues that they typically get, but rather grant revenues.
Great, nice. Also mentioned that last week spent time in Grand Rapids at the Michigan, the annual Michigan Township Association Educational Conference. And I have some information to leave with the library, but I'll just brief you on some of the sessions I went to that are very pertinent, things that we do here at this table for the township. And the, one of the classes I attended was Strategies for Equitable Water and Sewer Solutions. So it provided a lot of information. You heard from townships at all levels of water and sewer services, from we have none to we have very large, full-blown operations. And it was a way to identify, assuring that the systems are equitable in the sense that we have a good system, we're able to afford the system, the users are paying the appropriate fees to keep the system up and running. And I'm sure that sort of discussion's going to land here at this table sometime fairly soon. Also, attended a session on sidewalks to safety, is what it was called, and it discussed about how to afford sidewalks and what's legally available expenditures to a township, including special assessments, and gives some great information on that. And again, I'll leave these here for everyone to review. Also, attended one titled Working with Your Road Commission, and it kind of focused a little bit on road bonding as well for, if you are in the need to either, you know, fund with capital or take some debt out and strategies to go about funding the roads. And last but not least, and this was very interesting, it was in regards to utility size, solar and wind energy and battery storage systems, and there's a lot of discussion on something called Public Act Two Thirty-Three and Two Thirty-Four, and a little bit of Public Act One Sixteen, which we talked about here in the past meetings. But it was getting into what goes into the permitting process for utility-grade renewable energies. So all pertinent, all enlightening, and all enjoyable, believe it or not. So that covers about what I've been doing for the last couple of weeks.
Thanks.
Thank you. Trustee Lannan?
The road commission meeting is tomorrow, so I'll have information for the next meeting. I attended the conference as well. It was, I learned a lot, very interesting sessions. They were an hour and fifteen minutes, an hour and forty-five, sorry, each, and that was, worked out well as far as getting everything you need to know. One was the legal issues township's face. One was your first year as a township official, getting started, is zoning. It was just, I learned a lot, and it was very, very, time well-spent, and the speakers were amazing. They were really good.
Good to hear. Trustee Thering?
Planning Commission meets next week, Tuesday.
Fantastic. Clerk Cody?
Tuesday, April fifteenth, we have an election commission meeting at one forty-five, and then the public accuracy testing at two PM, where we test all the machines for the May Six election.
Is our election board fully able to attend that, or do we need substitutes?
I believe so.
Oh, we're there, yeah.
Awesome.
Good, one forty-five?
Yeah, I just scheduled it.
What time would you like us there?
Well, the accuracy testing's at two, and then I made the meeting for one forty-five, because it won't take that long to look everything over.
And I got my ballot in the mail.
Yeah. We got fifteen hundred sent out, and we already got about five hundred back. So, I mean, it's pretty good.
Great. I was on vacation, so I really have nothing to add at this point, but EDA, I'm excited to get to our meeting next week. And then just a public announcement, we're having a meeting of all of our boards next Wednesday. Okay, so moving on, consent agenda, happy to entertain motions regarding that, and I believe Trustee Lannan had warrants.
Yeah, I had mentioned that I looked at the warrants one day this week. Everything appeared to be in good order.
Move to approve these consent agenda?
Yeah, thank you. Wow, I don't know why I'm struggling.
Because you've been out of the office for a while.
Yeah.
Genie stepping.
Yeah, I do. I have had some things going on lately, so I'm a little distracted. My apologies. Motion by Rogers, support by Lannan.
That's my last name. Good.
Discussion.
She has a name tag right from her.
I know, but I can't see it, but I know it. So anyways, we have a motion on the floor to accept or approve the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Consent agenda passes unanimously. That brings us to item eleven on the agenda. on the Agenda New Business. First, we have introduction and first reading of a proposed amendment to ordinance 2401 to expand turnaround area design options for smaller private roads. And just to note, this is an ordinance that we recently updated and largely wrote. So this is a proposed modification to that. Mr. Stuldryer, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Thank you, and I do. Good evening, everybody. The item before you tonight is the first step in amending the private ordinance number 24-01 that was originally adopted in June of 2024. And this amendment would be to expand the turnaround area design options for the smaller private roads. You may recall, the ordinance talks about two types of private roads, smaller, eight units and less, and then ones that are larger. This amendment applies to the smaller private roads serving eight lots or less. And it came about from a meeting that we were having with an individual that was interested in purchasing some property in the township, and it was going to be on a private road. And this meeting was occurred back in March, just a month ago. And it was during that meeting that we identified that while the current ordinance has turnaround configurations, it's limited. I think it's just limited to one type, which is the standard T-turnaround, or, I'm sorry, the cul-de-sac, cul-de-sac. And in talking with these applicants and thinking about it, we quickly decided that we needed to update those turnaround possibilities for situations like this. So that has brought us up to today. We're proposing to add two additional types of turnaround during your packet with sketches that would end up in the ordinance. One would be a Y-type of turnaround, the other would be a T. So if you can imagine a road, currently, the ordinance says it would end in a cul-de-sac circle, and there might be other times where a different design may make sense. So you could have a Y configuration, pull in, pull out. You'd have a T, take a left, back out, and go about your business. So that's what this is about. We're asking that you conduct your first reading, or introduce it tonight, conduct the first reading tonight, and if you do take that action, it would be back in front of you in about, at your next meeting for a second reading and consideration for final approval. Be happy to answer any questions you may have, and that's my report on that.
Well, I would like to make a motion. Make a motion to conduct the first reading for the proposed amendment to the private road ordinance number 24-01 to extend turnaround areas, design options for smaller private roads serving up to eight lots.
Support.
Support.
Wow.
It's fully supportive.
Motion by Lannan, support by just about everybody else. I think I heard Brown first. Any objection to that?
No.
Support by Brown.
I was forceful maybe because I think it's very important. I think it's a great idea. I read through, I read through the proposal. It's, yeah, I can see where this is almost.
And I did, wanted to mention that these are designs that are, have been accepted by, or the road commission for one. Another is recommended as part of the fire, state fire code, so they're not just designs that we made up.
Well, that's good. Thank you.
Was the applicant, was it one that recommended? Not necessarily recommended, but suggested by chance?
I don't know. Mr. Nanny was in the meeting. I was not. What I will say, though, in that regard is, we had a situation come up at a meeting, and then less than four weeks later, we have recommended amendments to the ordinance that facilitate all the parties, will help all the parties and future parties. And I mention that because, and I know it's true to a large degree, you know, government runs slow, and it's by design in many instances that we're supposed to run slow and be deliberate. But union township, when needed, can move pretty quick. And so four weeks after a meeting where some light bulb goes off in one of our heads, we're in front of the board looking to change the rules.
That's good.
So, thank you.
That's great. I mean, this is just another, to me, it sounds another example of our staff working with applicants to make, at times, necessary changes to improve our ordinances. So I guess I just wanted to point that out, that that's, that's how should we, when we see the opportunity to make something better, that we step forward and do the right thing. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Support your comments, 100%. Other comments? We have a motion on the floor. See no more debate. Clerk Cody, would you do a roll call on the first reading of private road ordinance number 24-01 amendment?
Supervisor Milkie?
Yes.
Treasurer Rogers?
Yes.
Trustee Lay?
Yes.
Trustee Lannan?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Thering?
Yes.
Clerk Cody, yes. All yes.
All yes. Thank you very much. That moves us to item 11B on our agenda. This is discussion of the, our ends policy. In our ends, it's items 1.0 through 1.5. I'm assuming everybody's read those many times. I had thoughts on how to try to conduct some discussion over this. One thought was that we take it in steps, meaning if you feel something needs to be removed, we go through some deletions, and then additions and/or modifications, or we just do kind of a roundtable. I'm open to suggestions on how this board would like to go through this. Having said that, we do have a public meeting next week with our joint boards. I also think it's a great opportunity for Board of Trustees to hear from invested ownership, meaning our other boards, to help shape our ends.
Right.
So my thoughts are that we will come back to this as we receive additional input, because I think we learn things from those that serve on our planning commission.
Sure.
Yeah. So if there's not objection to that, I, my hope was that we would come back to this ultimately.
Absolutely. I think it's a great idea. For the ones that haven't gone to the joint meeting, it's outstanding. You will get a lot of information from, from the speakers at the meeting. So next week will be an exciting week to get some information for this.
Okay, so with that, I guess I'm gonna try the approach of asking about, are there things there we need to remove, and then we'll go through modifications and then additions? Is that reasonable? I haven't done it that way before. I'm kind of curious how it works. So does anybody feel there's something in here that is no longer relevant, that should be removed, or portions of language?
I think it's fine.
Nope.
All right. So no one's jumping in. I have one potential, well, one and a half. Item 1.4.2 reads, "People have optimum access to and enjoy a clean Chippewa River through intergovernmental efforts." And I know why the last three words were added to that sentence originally, just through intergovernmental
Right.
efforts. I just think it's, those three words are no longer needed, that they're, I don't want to limit the ways in which, I don't want the language to limit our ways in which we might see making sure that Chippewa River is clean and accessible. I just didn't see the use of those words.
Well, with those words there, it means we could call on other helpers if we needed it.
Correct. And without it, it means we can too.
Oh, really?
It's just, it's, this broadens it, I think, a little bit by removing that language, by not saying, this is how we're gonna do it. So I think taking these words out allows us to take a broader look at how we might live up to or try to go after those ends.
Because the way it's written, it sounds like you could only use governmental efforts.
That's how I read it when I first read it, and I'm like, I don't want it limited to that.
Okay.
Is that reasonable?
Yeah.
Any objections?
No, that makes sense.
I don't know if that was changed in the last four years or not, but to me, it sounds like it's just giving credit to various folks who network and work together for the cleanliness and
Right.
and access to the river, you know?
It was our intergovernmental partners that made a lot of that happen.
First comes to my mind are the folks that do lamprey studies on the river and such, and entities that do make the boat ramp access. And I noticed, walking through the park this spring, there's new cleaning stations at all the boat ramps for folks to scrub their watercraft off with, or their boots, or whatever they may be doing. But, so I just saw it as kind of a kudos at some point, but yes, I'm fine with you, your suggestion.
Do we have to have a motion?
The second one, I'm only gonna bring up, and this is 1.5.2. I actually was originally part of helping encouraging, encouraging this particular end. And I'll just read it for the public here. "Creating a purchasing policy that includes mechanism to encourage local purchase of goods and services within reasonable cost limits." I only lift this up because I thought we took this out last year.
First of that.
1.5.2. I thought I lost the argument last year, and I'm still a little sore about it, which is why I remember it. I'm not. But I actually thought we had taken it out.
I do remember a lot of conversation about it.
I do, too.
I remember we had a conversation.
And I think the argument for it was that we kind of already do that any
Right.
ways, and we don't want artificially, you know, more the free market perspective.
I think you said that the last time, too. Like, almost word for word.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I like to talk on both sides of the argument, so I can understand both sides. But I really thought we had gotten rid of this, and I'm okay with it there, as I've indicated, but
It's not doing any harm.
What's that?
It's not doing any harm. It's just not necessary. Right?
It's up to this board to decide that. I'm fine leaving that.
I think you can take it out. We don't need to create a purchasing policy, do we?
And it was the policy, I think, was the issue, was the language on it, that we had discussion on.
You know, you start getting into things like, what's local?
Right.
Local could be in our backyard, it could be in the United States, it could be
These are the arguments we used last time to say this isn't helpful necessarily to the administration, so.
Let's take it out.
Take it out.
No objections?
Nope.
Do you have a motion?
Nope. I don't think so. We'll come back, and we'll motion all our changes, but this is one, at this point, everybody's okay making.
You feel better now?
I don't, actually.
I really remember that, too.
All right, put it back in.
No, no. So I asked before, any other feelings of deletions? No? Modifications to what's there? Whether it be broad and wide sweeping on a particular end, or just a word correction for clarification?
I totally approached this not correctly. We do this, you know, and I'm so used to doing this. But I wasn't even thinking about looking at the policy. I was thinking about creating ends.
Well, we'll get to the creation.
So my focus was more about thinking along those lines, but like your suggestions here. Thanks.
No modifications, suggestions?
1.4.4, "Increase Use of Alternative Forms of Energy Within Township Facilities and Operations." Are we doing any of that?
We have done better with energy consumption, I think. You know, we've converted a lot of things to LED lighting.
Sure.
But I think as a township, we've encouraged, our zoning's encouraging some of that, solar, wind. But I think as a township, ourselves, for our own facilities, I'm not sure we're using alternative forms. Would you like to comment on this?
Be happy to. In your report that you received two weeks ago, this was an item that may have had zero bullet points underneath it. Recognize it's an end, and as long as it stays in here, we should be trying to advance that ball. But to date, we have not done much of anything in that area.
Just curious. Thank you.
I think it would speak to me better if it was more about just being efficient, efficient use of our
Absolutely.
of our energy and the resources.
Yes.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Feelings on this? I appreciate you bringing it up, because I thought that when I was reading it, but I didn't take a note.
That was another one we worked a lot on, I remember also. There was a lot of conversation about that with the solar.
Yeah. So what are this board's feelings on this? As manager said, we haven't done a lot towards this. Can we say it better?
When was it instituted? Like, when was it added to the ends?
I couldn't tell you. It's probably been a few years. You know, Mr. Stuldryer?
My guess is it was added in
After 2020.
mid-2023, when we last reviewed these ends and made several updates to them. We had a different board then. There was a lot of discussion about charging stations on township property, how to power this building. There was a lot of discussion amongst various board members on that topic. I'm pretty sure this was the result of that. So I think that's how it got there.
If you recall, some years ago, we were utilizing and monitoring, or folks at CMU were doing some monitoring for us. We had a couple of small turbines and a wind spire out here in the parking lot, and you can still see where the bases of those were. Hopefully, they lasted their life, you know, it was maybe a 10-year life on those units. But there were some studies going on, and the township was utilizing that energy, as far as I understand. So we've been a little more proactive and did some sample testing. It's kind of, the idea was to try and gain information to give results to the public who may be interested in putting small home, not utility-grade, but just small home, little wind spires and turbines up.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
What I think we've done well as a township is updating our ordinances to allow and encourage solar, alternative forms of energy.
Yeah.
We've made that something that can be done in our township without hopefully much difficulty, and we've even adjusted those ordinances as we've seen limitations on those that get in the way.
Yeah, right. Yeah, it's all about. I don't recall there, but there may be even a, a unit out at the water tower, the groundwater tower facility on Isabella near the freeway.
That one's still there, I think.
Yeah, that one's still there. But to the original question, we have not increased the use of any alternative energy here in the township. And whether or not you want to leave it in there or not, of course, it's up to the board. As I stated during the last time we had this discussion, as time goes by and we continue to receive our energy needs from the energy companies, you're already noting it, a lot of that energy is sourced with renewable energy. So it was my position in '23, and it continues to be now. So it was my position in twenty-three, and it continues to be now, that you can do nothing in this regard, and you will be increasing the use of alternative energy in our facilities.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
I guess our question is, is that enough?
So the question is, eliminate one point four point four, was that your suggestion? Or leave it without?
Treasure Ro- Treasure Rogers, uh, brought up, I guess, the question of
Are we even doing that?
Yeah, are we even doing that?
Okay.
And my view is that it, at this point, that's one that gets in the way of our other ends at this point. Because we aren't doing anything, and I'm not sure how we actually accomplish that.
Well, we'd accomplish it by switching out our fleet to things like electric or hydrogen powered, large equipment. You know, those type of things, trying to put, I don't know, solar panels on top of your building and disconnect from the grid. You know, and I'm exaggerating to make the point, but, you know, basically producing our own energy through these alter- alternative means, uh,
Does consumers have a buyback program? As far as buying surplus energy or whatever?
Yes.
Now, the other part of the discussion, when it, when it eighty percent, probably ninety percent of our energy consumption has to do with water and wastewater facilities. Okay, and you're not gonna find a windmill big enough or a set of windmills on a piece of property that we own big enough for either one of those facilities, uh, for the kinda, uh, kilowatt hours that they use. So that's another limiting factor. I mean, if you have your office building right here, a couple other office type of buildings, but if you look at the consumers' energy bills, it's all about powering the apparatus that provides water and wastewater services.
Comments on what the board would like to do? I don't have an issue leaving it, but, but I also don't have high expectations that a lot's gonna be done with this either. Obviously, as, as we build, if we were to build something new at some point, we would look at what makes economic sense.
That was kind of my, my thought, was leave it in there, because we may be doing amendments, changes to our infrastructure, that that may be something we work into new infrastructure plans.
Well, any time changes are made, though, that I'm sure that's taken into consideration. Whatever we're doing, can we, how can we make it better?
Yeah.
For example, you know, putting lighting in a room, now going to LED lighting, you know? We're gonna change the lighting in the room, so the fore- the thought is, let's change it to LED lighting, because it's more efficient, so.
Right.
That's simply becoming more efficient, that's not changing to an alternate. But you could, you could simply put, like, um, James said, remove, increase use, and put, consider use of or support use of, or if you wanna make any change at all, just a couple thoughts.
I'd just leave it alone for now.
Yeah.
I'm okay with that.
Yep.
I'll have to think about it all year now.
We'll have a chance to come back to this, but, so, at this point, we're leaving that alone?
Yeah.
But it's great to talk about these, that's why we're doing it.
Um, so with regards to what else is there, um, any additions being thought or requested by board members? Nobody's jumping in, so I'll add one. And the best place I saw to put this is in one point three, and we're kind of already doing this. Uh, we really began doing this more back in, uh, January of twenty-one, but capital planning, um, I'd like to see some kind of end that that we continue to round out our capital planning for all the assets the township has. And I know we've come a long way in the last decade on that. But I think we can do better. I don't have the language for that, but if I'm willing to put something together, if
I'd like to see what it looks like.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, um, I'll, I'll work on that then, and we'll
I think that's very, very important, as we've seen what happens if you don't.
Right, and, and we've discussed it as a board a lot, but it, it wasn't part of our ends. And I thought it'd be a good one to be as part of our ends. And I do, I do commend our, the organization for taking a lot of steps, um, towards doing proper capital planning.
There is one other one, Brian.
Yeah?
One point five point one. I don't understand what that means.
Here's what I understand it to be. Is that our zoning within what is allowed in zoning, by state law?
Yep.
Um, is that there could be a business that you might not want by a school.
Sure, yep.
Okay, and so there is only to help protect the school from those kinds of establishments being next door. That might be an example.
Okay.
Um, so, at least that's how I always interpreted this, is it's much more of a zoning aspect.
Okay.
Um, because obviously, if something meets zoning, you cannot deny its use, right?
Okay.
Um, but zoning can set up rules that helps protect various, um, zones within our township, like residences or churches or schools. Does that help?
The wording is something like controlled establishment of potentially undesirable businesses.
Let me ask our manager how you interpret this.
I interpret it to be related to zoning land use, and the wording is a bit cumbersome. You know, if you wanna tweak it a bit, you could say manage the establishment, or
Or controlled location? No?
Possible, uh, I don't know, Mr. Nanny might have a idea, or we could come back to you with something.
I think one of the issues that I'm running into is how do you define undesirable? It's very arbitrary.
What jumps out at me on this particular writing of it on this line is controlled being in all caps.
I know, it's justified.
I didn't know if, um, when they say controlled, are you talking, would, would there be things controlled by, say, at the state level?
Could, could be, I mean, an example of that would be, uh, dispensaries, grow facilities, um, you know, this township has taken the stance to not allow that in our community, but we're given that latitude by state law. And so we, we've chosen to control that.
But it just strikes me funny, is that being in all capital letters, that controlled, it's like
It's justified text, it's weird looking.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We spent, if I recall, we spent some time on this as well, for some reason, trying to figure out the, the wording on it.
Maybe that's why it's spaced out, fine, because we couldn't think of another word.
Yeah.
All right, so we all have some ideas of
Bring it back to us?
Yeah.
Is that okay?
Yeah, if anybody has suggestions on
We all have issues with point point five, point five point one.
Good to know.
But Mr. Nanny was gonna contribute something.
Yeah, I'm happy to entertain if you have something to offer.
I, I don't have particular language to change this. I think, I think, uh, one day it's to not look at un- undesirable on its own. It's potentially undesirable.
Yes.
And, and I think that that gives a little more clarity, a little bit more anyway. There, this is a very hard word to alter, because, uh, as the manager said, referring to one type of business, I could use some examples, I think maybe the one you'd think, you know, this is an adult bookstore. It's an activity, adult video store, those kinds of things. It don't seem very often anymore, but, but for a long time, that was common in every community, somebody wanted to have an adult business in it. Where should that be located? There are certain rules of, from case law, as well as, uh, state law, apply to our local zoning, um, that, that determine where the location is. Location is a piece of it. But it's also the conditions under which this type of operation can be at that place, so it's more than just location.
Okay.
It's also the other li- limiting factors that might be appropriate to ensure that that business, even if we don't really wanna have it there, or really don't want, we prefer not to have it in communities, potentially undesirable, that it can be there without harming surroundings, without our business.
So examples of that might be screening or hours of operation, those kinds of things that are legal to restrict in zoning.
I think exactly, and even here, the word controlled is not, that's, that's a word that, that suggests, not that we're prohibiting.
Right.
Use prohibited, that's what it is. This is saying it's allowed, but with certain controls. So, but language is actually, uh, not, not bad in that, in that sense. Certainly look at, as I said, uh, but, uh, it is intended really, as you said, like, on zoning, with the idea of allowing something there, making sure it's compatible.
Could we, could we say something like to have influence, influence of potentially undesirable businesses? So we're not saying we're gonna control it, but we might have
I think the, the point our director made was control is actually a good word.
Yeah.
Because we control it through limits, right? Like we do in all of our zoning, you'd limit setbacks, you'd limit potentially hours of operation if it's a noisy operation.
Just change the font, so it's
Well, I mean, I don't wanna get rid of it, I wanna be able to keep it, so, I mean, if, if that's really, we understand the, the meaning of it, so.
And I think more importantly, that the administration understands that what we're trying to articulate, right, through our ends.
Maybe to add, including location, et cetera, or something.
But don't we, to some extent, do this for most, for even the desired businesses? We have a degree of regulation and control over where those go and things like that, so it feels like, I don't know, superfluous to some extent.
This, this is certainly a holdover from when I, I mean, this has not been removed or changed in the nine years I've been here. And Trusty Lady makes a good point, we do this with all, uh, development to one degree or another. We, we have some control, and we look at various aspects of what, where, when, and how. You know, twenty years ago, and undesirable business was a, a record shop, you know, because they also sold pipes and, you know, marijuana wasn't legal or any of that kind of stuff, and as long as it was next to a burger chef, it was okay. Because, you know, where else do you see burger shelves? But, you know, in, not my part of town. So, it very well may be that this one
Just take it out.
is ripe for removal.
A little puritanical sounding?
Yep.
Take it out?
Take it out.
Take it out. Anybody else wanna take it out?
No objection to that.
I say take it out.
I would like to hear from Mr. Lan- uh, Nanny prior to us just taking it out, make sure we haven't missed anything.
Sounds appropriate.
I don't know why we wouldn't take it out, but
I, 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 it is part of zoning, it is part of the very purpose of the zoning ordinance. So I think if we did take it out here, we would still be addressing this purpose of that ordinance.
In, in a lot of ways, too, I think master plan would speak to this kind of sentence, I guess. I have no objection to taking it out. Anybody else?
No objections.
Okay, so if we do that, we've left one point five with one bullet item, which I don't wanna remove that last bullet item, which really has to do with making sure that we strive, um, I'll, I'll just read it. Create mechanism to increase dialogue with business community to ensure quality services are provided. And I think the intent there is to make sure that we're not roadblocks to development, um, or at least unreasonable roadblocks to development. I think that's kind of why that was put in, was to encourage that.
Yeah.
That's a good main bullet point to focus on.
Yeah.
I think it's a good one to leave. So, I mean, just having the one is a good thing.
Okay.
Just a point of clarification on just one left. One point five point two. I thought I'd heard we were removing just the piece about the inclusion of local purchase of goods and services, but we were retaining the creation of a purchasing policy. And maybe I misunderstood that.
I thought we were taking the whole thing out.
Probably taking the whole thing out.
Okay, I just, that's why one day.
Hear that differently?
I think I heard how Mark did, said, but, um, which brings the point, don't we have a purchasing policy? I know we've always talked about a future expansion of this organization would, could potentially be considering purchasing, but I
If we had a purchasing policy the way I would envision one, this wouldn't still be in the ends. So, we do not. Uh, we have many uh, statements in, in, in various locations that help us manage purchasing. But we don't have a standalone purchasing policy that I could set right here.
So is it bad, just to have one bullet point?
No, I don't think so.
It doesn't necessarily have to be alone forever.
Right.
Just for time being.
All right, so consensus, right, we're, we're in agreement, one point five point one gone, one point five point two gone. Anything else to add? Or last minute changes or deletions?
Can we add things later?
Yeah, I mean, this, this is a great opportunity to do it. So if we're okay closing this discussion for now.
I'd like to get some feedback from the next, the meeting that we're gonna have on Wednesday, and then readdress this.
Yes, so this, this is a great segue into, uh, new business C, eleven C, um, next meeting. So ju- just for the public's, uh, knowledge, uh, we have a joint meeting, I believe it's at, uh, it's probably at six o'clock, is it Jameson Hall?
Yes, Jameson.
Next Wednesday, the sixteenth.
Six o'clock.
Just one second.
Sure.
So, creating a purchasing policy, though, is that something you are working on? Like, did you, is that something like a future thing that?
It's my position that a purchasing policy is needed. It, it makes good business. I am, I can't say that I'm actively working on it. I have a file that is opened, and I have samples, but I, I, I have not done anything in that arena uh, to create a standalone purchasing policy that come, brings together all the items that do exist that have to do with purchasing and then adding what is necessary.
This is like a guide that you follow, so I mean, if this is not on here, it's like
Whether
Kind of taking it out for you.
Well, there are many things that aren't specific in your ends that we still do and put in place.
Yeah.
And this wouldn't be, this would still remain, because I feel we need one, whether it's in an ends document or not.
Okay.
So.
I just wanted to
Now, if it's, the more important the item is to the board, the more you want it in here, because that signals something to me. But we will get one, uh, you know, would have liked to have had it done by now, but you've heard me say that for a couple years.
Yeah, well, I just feel like your input's important on the, you know, the functioning of the township, and if you think it is important that we have one, we should keep it in. You know what I mean? Like, as a board, we should take that into consideration.
The things that are most important are contained in your governance policy manual, and they're mostly located in the, in in, in the section dealing with, uh, financial condition and activities. It talks about what my purchasing authority is, um, talks about communication to the board. It talks about what my purchasing authority is, talks about communication to the board. It does not, for instance, talk about what is the laddering, if you will, that goes from getting a few quotes on something over the phone to a more formal process to purchase something. That's the part of the policy that I'd like to have. So I don't think we're in any risk. We have sufficient internal controls, we're not going to buy anything that, we don't know what we're buying, but it's the process that we would go through. And, you know, I think the limit is, and you have to go to a couple of different documents, but I want to say that the limit is $10,000, and we have to at least get three quotes over the phone. And when I'm approving things, that, under the $20,000 limit, I'm often being, I'm being provided with information that allows me to be comfortable that we're competitively bidding for our goods and services.
Okay.
Good?
I just wanted to...
All right, thanks. So that meeting next week, it's hosted by the Board of Trustees, Planning Commission, our EDA is invited, I believe the ZBA, I miss them. Didn't I say Planning Commission?
Mm-hmm.
And the purpose of that is really just to kind of recap the last year for each of these boards, and the looking forward in what the Board of Trustees would like to see, and what these other boards would like to see our township move towards. It's a great opportunity to hear from some of our own residents that sit on those boards and get some feedback on where this township should go. So usually, each chair will give a presentation. So usually I prepare some form of document and try to recap this past year and what we are looking at in the future, which this is, the ends that we're just discussing now is a great opportunity to kind of cover that and ask for their feedback. But is there any specific messaging you'd like to hear from us? That was my big question for all of you.
He could have pre-asked us that question, so we could have prepared for it.
Right.
If you have thoughts on it that come up, text me, email me, and I'll try to incorporate those kind of things in my write-up.
Okay.
Otherwise, I'm going to write something up. If I get it done in advance enough, I'll send it out so you can review it. Otherwise, I hope you trust me, and you're all allowed to jump in during that time as well, so. So I look forward to that meeting. I know you attended last year.
Yes, I did.
Yeah, before you were elected.
I was on board of appeals, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
That's right.
So your thoughts is you're just going to reflect on the highlights of the past year?
A little bit, but looking forward, I think, too. I think we can look at our budget a little bit, and what we set as priorities. You know, we budget a lot of money for trying to get those sidewalks on bluegrass, for example, some of the road projects that we have coming up, some of the water program that we have, right? We're expanding our water line, just kind of relay that information to other board members.
What's important about getting with all the other boards is we listen to their chair, what they have going, and this is, we're just kicking off our budgeting thought process for next year, so we spend half a year identifying what's our priorities, developing our ends, talking with all the folks to have a quality plan in place.
Which is exactly why this meeting is scheduled, the joint meeting is scheduled when it is, so that that can help affect that budgeting process. And I'll give Trustee Theron credit for doing that. We used to have this in August, and it was too late then.
Oh.
And Trustee Theron said, "Let's move that up in the process."
Makes sense.
So, I don't have anything else on that? You all good?
Yeah.
Trustee Lannon?
Just a question, we're eliminating 1.5.2, 1.5...
Point one.
Point one.
Point one?
And...
And 1.4.4, or did we come up with something on that?
I think we were trying to look...
Leave that alone.
We're leaving that alone?
Yep.
Okay.
And then eliminating the last three words of 1.4.2, and then I'll try to put together some language in 1.3, I believe, for capital planning.
Okay, great, thanks.
So moving on to extended public comment, item 12 on the agenda, extended public comment is restricted to five minutes regarding any issue. If you choose to address the public, please state your name and address for the record. And with that, we'll open up extended public comment at 8:30 PM.
There's no one online.
Thank you. Let the record show, nobody's coming forward online, because there's nobody there currently. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you, everybody, for coming.
Thank you.
Last call? All right, seeing no one else coming forward, we'll close extended public comment at 8:31 PM. That takes us to item 13, right? 13 on the agenda, manager's comments, Mr. Stuldryer?
Thank you, and just two brief ones. A reminder that Union Township is closed for, on Good Friday. So that's just a reminder, that's an annual closure, part of the collective bargaining agreement. And as it relates to the annual meeting, I heard the time being 6 o'clock, I didn't hear that everybody, that it was confirmed that it's at Jameson Hall, everybody knows that.
Yeah, it's on the agenda.
And then, terms of a little bit of update, you know, we've been talking about trying to get the Cultural and Recreation Commission, get them to hold their annual meeting. We've appointed, made an appointment for one of our, for our seat on that. And I've been working on communicating to all the signatories of the interlocal agreement, which are Union Township, City of Mount Pleasant, Isabella County, Chippewa Township, and Central Michigan University. I've reached out to all of those principals in an email, asking for the name of their appointee and contact information, and also for confirmation that their person that they have currently, that is their current appointee, that that individual is still in, I'll say, good standing. There are some limitations on board member, yeah, limited to three years, three-year terms, you can't serve more than two consecutive terms, those kind of things. So I'm trying to ascertain that, one, who's your appointee? Do they still have standing? And please provide some contact information. And I'm doing that to, I guess, help, although I'm not quite sure who I'm helping yet, because the body doesn't exist, I don't think, is the CR, helping the CRC be able to hold, call and hold a first meeting, and then it can be turned over to them. But until we know who is there, and if, you know, do we have a quorum that's been duly appointed, it's just these housekeeping things. And so I want to let you know I'm in that process. I've begun to get replies back, so I'm beginning to understand who's currently on the board, and with contact information. So then, as soon as I get four names, I'm going to give them all a call, or whatever I'm going to do, and hold a meeting or something, so that two of them can call a meeting and get the ball rolling. So that's just a brief update. And then, lastly, I don't know if it was the second, the last meeting in March, it might have been February, where we informed the board that we were getting ready to take some civil, noncriminal, civil, legal action on a property owner that had not complied with his zoning board of appeals decision. That, that action, that's been filed in court, so it's now in the formal stage. And the relevant people, which is mostly, I think, our attorneys, were in the process of serving that complaint to the counterparty. So that's an update on that. That's all I have, thank you.
Very good, thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, a question for you, Mark. I was thinking maybe the Mount Pleasant Public School, folks had a representative on the CRC.
If I failed to mention them, I apologize.
Is that...
They are.
They are?
Yeah.
Great, thanks.
There's six, six bodies, like I said, five, and named five, there's actually six. It isn't even number. If you wonder why, don't ask me, but it's an even number.
Very good.
Thanks.
All right, moving on to final board member comment, Trustee Theron?
Thank you. I just wanted to say something about, we all received an email with a letter from the Central Christian Academy. One of their board members had sent an email in regarding to working with Mr. Nanny and his staff. The kind words were very nice to hear about how helpful and informative he was as a search for a location for their school. And I did stop by last Friday to just see Manager Stuldryer and Mr. Nanny, but I was only had an opportunity to see Mr. Stuldryer, and I just, you know, really appreciate the letter, like to see that, but I know that that happens every day from Mr. Nanny and his staff, that that's how they operate, so. But I'm really glad to hear somebody put that down and send that a letter to the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Theron. Clerk Cody? Trustee Brown?
I'm all set tonight.
Trustee Lannon?
Yeah, I don't have anything that I can think of right now, thanks.
I'm just really grateful to the organization that came in to give their, the presentation about the tiny house village, I think that's a very worthwhile endeavor, and I'd like to see it come to fruition.
Treasurer Rogers. Say "got it now"?
There you go, yeah. Well, I mentioned at the last meeting about the sidewalk of bluegrass, and then you said just now that we budgeted for that?
We have, last I checked on the budget, so I'm going from memory here, I think it was in the neighborhood of $300,000, $350,000, which is a good chunk for the, for bluegrass.
Would that be both sides then, instead of just one side?
I have the budget book, I can look to be precise. We have hundreds of thousands of dollars, more than $500,000, I think approaching $700,000. Budgeted throughout the budget, some is in the general fund, some's going to be limited to the east or west EDA, but in the aggregate. And the note under there, I think, describes a couple different sidewalks or areas.
Right.
I know bluegrass is mentioned, so that's how I would describe the budget for sidewalks.
Okay.
There is not a single number associated with just bluegrass.
Okay.
It's more into a bucket, so to speak.
Right.
I think, maybe, can I expand on that a little bit? For example, last year, we had a certain amount of money set aside for sidewalks, but it really comes down to what are we able to accomplish?
Sure, yeah.
So I mean, the money ends up going to the various projects in which that we can actually get done. Because I know with the bluegrass easements being the issue there, the main issue...
Yep.
And/or permission from some of the vacant property owners, that the reality is, it's possible, we won't be able to do it, even though we appropriate money for it, right? But I appreciate your comments from the last meeting that I watched.
Yes, thank you. And I, so, I took this packet today, that, with the means, how to make a means, or write a means, or whatever, so I wrote one, and I don't know if I was supposed to do that yet. So I went out and took a walking wheel, measuring wheel, measured the dirt path that goes between where the sidewalk ends and where the new one starts, and it's 426 feet of dirt path, and it's uneven, it's bumpy, it's, so if anyone in any, I recommend that we address the issue as "lack sidewalk on a portion of bluegrass road. The current dirt path in this area is a safety concern, it's especially dangerous and possibly unavailable for passage to anyone with a disability. Their apartment complex is nearby, so the foot traffic couldn't be high. On a scale of one to four, with four being the highest priority, I believe this is a three point five." And it's only that one side of the road, not both, which is that one, so that's it.
Awesome, thank you. I agree, that is, it's a real safety issue there.
And I'll just clarify, my earlier, there's $990,000 budgeted in the general fund for sidewalks, and in the notes, there's $300,000 earmarked for new sidewalks along the north side of West Pickard, from basically this corner down to Ashland. $60,000 for ramps and pedestrian crossings at this intersection right here, because it's not complete. And then, $255,000 described as progress on remaining broomfield slash bluegrass sidewalk sections. And then, $375,000, which we've had in there for a while, to contribute to the, I'll call it, the city project of the pathway up towards Mission Park, the Bark Park. So that's how we have that budgeted.
Right.
I'm going to piggyback on, you good?
Yep.
I'm going to piggyback on Trustee Theron a little bit. I happened to be in the office before I went to vacation, checking in a couple of things, and a representative from MMDC came in, and they were filing some paperwork having to do with permitting process. And I just happened to be chatting with him, and I asked him about his experience with Union Township. And all he could do was say positive things. He said, "It's been a great process, the staff has been super helpful." So it's another incident of, now, I did solicit it, but he only had kind things to say about the entire process. With that...
And along those lines, and I have to add it, because I was involved, between Tara, Amy, and myself, I ended up here at the Township Hall at 8 o'clock Saturday morning, so that the Director of the Little League could get a key for Township Hall, so they could hold their board meeting on Sunday morning. So we aim to please.
Amen.
Move to adjourn?
Support.
Support.
Most of my Rogers, I heard support by Cody, did I get that right?
Yeah, sure.
Theron?
I think there was, it was emphatic, like, everybody.
All in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. We are adjourned at 8:43 PM.